Good evening. I'm calling to order the Concord Township Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, December 5th, 2023. And we'll start out with a call to order. Heather, if you could call the roll.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Here.
Mr. Schindler?
Here.
Mr. Ruffert?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
And Mr. Terriaco?
Here.
Okay. All right. We have everyone here. We have a lot of work tonight that we're going to be doing on proposed zoning text amendments, mainly to the RCD here in Concord. And we're going to start out, if I could have a motion to open a public hearing on zoning text amendments for the resolution. Do I have a motion to open?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Rich.
The public hearing this evening, right?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Hiram. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. And seeing that we have no public here, we're going to proceed and go through the eight amendments that are listed on our agenda tonight. And we're going to take into consideration a letter that we have from the Lake County Planning and Community Development Organization with some recommend... And the first item we have here, and I'm going to read this for the record, it is, "Modify Section 1613. Approved by adding a new requirement that the approved preliminary plan is an integral part of the zoning resolution, and any deviations are considered a zoning violation." So I'm open for discussion on that. Now, we do have one comment, I think it's one comment here from Lake County. And that basically, I think they're talking here to keep the phrase preliminary development plan as opposed to a preliminary plan. Does that make sense to you, Heather, as far as keeping that wording in there?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I think it does make sense. And upon receiving the recommendation, I did kind of go through the whole Article 16 and noticed that there was an inconsistency regarding that.
Okay.
And I think in some cases, too, we even identified it as township preliminary development plan. So it probably would be best to go through the section and make sure that we're being consistent. And I do appreciate their reasoning behind that was to differentiate between county subdivision preliminary plan, therefore if we say preliminary development plan, final development plan, I would agree with that.
And that's what they're saying here. It's less confusing and makes more sense, especially when it's used with the phrase final development plan. ORC 711.10B uses preliminary plans, so we encourage townships to not use that phrase and continue using development plan. So if we all agree, that's probably a good suggestion. They also have in here in Section 1613, "Staff recommends the following language: The preliminary development plan approved in accordance with this section shall be an integral part of the approved amendment to change the zoning map portion of the Concord Township zoning resolution in any departure." Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes.
We're good with that? Okay.
So we're going to, throughout this whole thing, we're going to say township preliminary development plan, or we're going to put the township in here?
I think that's up for you guys to discuss. I mean...
Well, certainly, we're going to put the preliminary development plan.
Yeah.
Do we want the word township in there everywhere?
Township.
Or is it assumed that because it's our regulation, it is part of the township zoning regulations? I don't know that we really need the word township in there.
To me, it's confusing.
To add that?
To be township plan. So is it the township plan from Concord Township, or is it the developer's plan?
Or any township.
Or any township.
Right, right. So anybody else have a feeling on that? I agree with Ron that that's kind of unnecessary?
Yeah, I agree. Ron had made the observation here before the meeting, actually. So the title of 1612, which precedes 13, in 1614, the word township is, could be, as Ron interpreted as the township plan. It isn't. It's the preliminary development plan.
From the developer.
The applicant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Seems like the board township should be dropped.
Yeah, let's, I, let's agree that we'll drop township.
Okay.
And but use the, add the word development where appropriate.
Okay.
We're all in agreement with that?
Yes.
Then, as, as we go through this, the first change that we have in red ink on our handout here is Section I. Well, I'll go back one. We have a Section G, then we labeled Section H to be this paragraph that says, "Wherever a preliminary development plan is approved, simultaneously with a map amendment to plan development district, the amendment preliminary development plan become effective 30 days after such adoption." So that becomes Paragraph H. We're just making that a new paragraph, if you will. And then Paragraph I, this is a completely changed paragraph, and I'll read it. "The preliminary plan approved in accordance with this section shall be an integral part of the zoning resolution, and any departure from this plan or modification thereof shall be a violation of said zoning resolution and shall be subjected to the provisions and penalties prescribed in Section 3, violations enforcement and fees, and in Section 4, which is penalties." Everybody okay with that language?
Comment, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
So the insertion of development then would occur?
Correct.
But at the last month's meeting, I had suggested better definition to be given to any departure from this plan subject to the, subject to the determination of the chief zoning official or some language. I feel like it's open-ended.
Okay.
Who determines the departure from the plan? And we didn't really decide on that suggestion at the time, and I'm just bringing it up now.
Okay.
It still seems, if the board agrees, open-ended, and perhaps to close up. Who determines the departure from the plan?
Yeah, and what is a departure? What's the definition of a departure?
And, and the comment I had, or the addition would be, "To the judgment of the township's chief zoning official or whatever it was."
Okay.
Zoning inspector.
Okay.
Something in that order.
Adding wording in there that, adding wording in there that it'd be a departure according to Heather in this case, right?
Yeah, without her name.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, would you agree with that insertion?
I would be okay with adding that at the discretion of the zoning inspector as determined by the zoning despect, inspector, because the zoning inspector has to determine whether or not modifications to an approved plan are major or minor anyway.
Right.
So, I mean, I think without putting it in there that it would be the zoning inspector, you could probably imply that it would be, but I think by adding it, you would clarify that. And then this is also the paragraph where the county was asking us to change the wording. They didn't say this in their letter, but it was 1316I is where they were asking us to change this wording. And we kind of skipped over that. So I think based on their second bullet point on the front of their letter, that they would want us to change it.
Okay.
So I don't know what you guys think about that. The preliminary development plan approved in accordance with this section shall be integral part of the approved amendment. But we'll leave it there.
Heather, if I may, that's an insertion. It's going to precedes and any departure. So it's replacing the first sentence or part of the sentence?
Yeah, okay.
And then any, and any departure from this plan, subject to the
Okay.
Judgment, the discretion, the zoning, yes, we were just talking about.
Okay.
Or modification thereof shall be a violation.
Okay. So we'll reword that paragraph accordingly, Heather?
Based on planning commission's recommendation and by adding, okay.
Okay, very good.
Is everyone okay with that?
Agreed.
Good suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Then Paragraph J reads, the only change there is we eliminated the preliminary development plan, but we'll be adding that back in. That includes a major subdivision. Okay, so we took the word "that" out. But I think we need it in there, don't we? In Paragraph J, the word "that," or whenever a preliminary development plan
Includes a major.
Or includes a major. Okay, you could take it out. You could. All right. When I read the whole thing, it makes sense. Everyone agreed taking that word out?
That's fine.
Okay, very good. So that, J's fine with those changes?
Now, this, this paragraph, J, does do just what we said in I, as defined by the Lake County subdivision regulations. It clarifies who does that, just like we said in the previous paragraph.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, good point.
So, so we're making, making it consistent with what we said in I.
Okay.
This is by somebody else.
Correct, correct.
And I think that's a good thing to do.
Okay.
Good.
Moving on to Section 16.14, we do have a Lake County recommendation there. It says, "Proposed Part A is not currently A in the existing text. Must relabel parts as A, B, C, D, or do not name the first part A." But what we have is, "A, after approval of the township preliminary plan, development plan it'll be." We had the word development there. "The developer shall submit a final development plan for each phase of the development to the zoning commission that changes it from the trustees and brings it to the zoning commission for review and approval prior to any construction or development of the property." And then we've wiped out the rest of the old text that was in there and simplified it down to just that, that A item. Is there any discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I was confused by the county planning commission's.
I was, too.
I don't understand that. I...
Do you know what they meant there, Heather?
Yeah, I think it was actually like a, an error when I was formatting the text. It added in that sub-paragraph A. So right now, that whole paragraph that's identified as 1614A is really not subsection A. It's just stated there.
Oh.
And when we added the, I added the A without showing that as a change inadvertently, and then subsequently B, and then I had two Bs, and I didn't notice that. And I think we tried to fix that last month. It was mentioned.
Oh, okay, you did.
And I somehow still screwed it up. So I would be okay with making that first paragraph A and showing that as a change, keeping B, and then just re...
Okay.
If you guys are okay, then change the second B to C.
The main thing, I think, there is the submission of the plan to the zoning commission first here.
Yeah.
As opposed to the trustees. Flipping over then to...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, the other is, eliminating the word township.
After approval of the township preliminary development plan.
Yeah.
Do we want to keep the township in there now? No.
No.
No, take township out. Take township out.
And put in preliminary development plan.
Right. Preliminary development. Good catch.
Yep.
Okay, now going to the next page on Section B. The first change there is we've eliminated the old section or paragraph six, numbered six, that said, "Estimated cost of entire phase as well as estimated cost for each use area, including both private and public improvements." That's been lined out, and we added a new paragraph six, which is kind of part of the old six that says, "Developers shall post with the Lake County Commissioners prior to the commencement of any construction a bond sufficient to ensure completion of the dedicated roadways and related public facilities." And then we go to a paragraph seven now that it's changed strictly. It's, the title of the paragraph seven is, "Environmental restoration and seasonal maintenance plan, if applicable." We've crossed out the language below that and put in language, and this is where I think that B is confusing. So that B, that B comes out of there, right, Heather?
Yes.
Okay. This is the zoning commission, wow, a lot of change here. "Zoning commission shall review the final development plan and approve, modify, or deny the plan on the basis, number one, that all requirements of the preliminary plan and this zoning resolution have been satisfied, and, number two, that the following conditions are met. A, this is small letter A, that the proposed detailed final development plan for the individual phase of the overall PUD or RCD is consistent with the approved preliminary development plan." And then small letter B, "That any part of the PUD or RCD not used for structures, parking, or loading areas, or streets shall be landscaped or otherwise improved, or if approved or required by the zoning commission or this resolution, left in its natural state." Small letter C then says, "That the internal streets and thoroughfares proposed, proposes are suitable and adequate to accommodate the anticipated traffic within and through the development as determined by the Lake County engineer." And then finally, small letter D, "That the detailed final development plan is consistent with the intent and purpose of this resolution to promote public health, safety, general welfare of the residents of Concord Township, Lake County, Ohio." That's all the new wording in there. And I know we spent a lot of time talking about this. This is the result. Everybody okay with it?
Two minor.
Certainly.
It's now the C, number one, that all requirements of the preliminary, insert development again, to be consistent. And then to C, that the internal streets and thoroughfares proposed, it's just a typo.
I saw that, yeah. That read funny. So that word becomes proposed and not proposes, just a correction there. Okay, anything else in that section? Everybody good?
Good.
Okay.
Well, now wait.
All right.
Item D, small d, that the detailed final development plan is consistent with the intent as determined by...
This is, Mr. Chairman, this is the review criteria of the zoning commission.
Yeah, it's by the, by the...
The review board.
Yeah.
By the overall purpose of the resolution.
The zoning commission shall review.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Because we're going to review it. And by that time, by the time we get to this, we will know what the intent and purpose is.
I sure hope so.
Okay. So you give in on that one?
I'll give in.
Okay. 1615, this is zoning, has to do with zoning permits, "And after the final development plan for each phase is approved, new wording then becomes comma, and after all the proposed improvements have been constructed and accepted by the applicable agencies," instead of the township trustees, and then it goes back to the original language, "and any required final subdivision plan is recorded, the zoning inspector shall issue zoning permits that comply with the approved final development plan in accordance with the procedure set forth in Section 11, zoning permits as amended in March 9th of 2018." So now, we do have a input from the county on that that says, "Section 1615, the Lake County subdivision regulations allow for a construction surety to be posted in lieu of improvements being installed as a condition of the plat being recorded. This allows for lots to be created and properly, and property, rather, to be transferred. Concord should check with their legal advisor to determine if they can make the property owner wait until the improvements are installed prior to a zoning permit being issued. Lake County Building Inspector does require the sanitary and water lines to be installed prior to issuing a building permit." Keith, any comment on that?
Anytime there's a requirement that, you know, the county, they don't require the actual improvements to be made, they just require a surety. I would worry that, you know, if a developer saw, okay, there's two routes I can go that the county says and what the township says, they'll normally pick the easier route. So I tried to do some research on this afternoon, on this this afternoon. I couldn't come up with much. I would just sort of worry if there was a little bit of ambiguity between what the county requires and then what the township would require.
Okay. Would you suggest any wording change here?
Off the top of my head, I can't think of anything, a magic phrase that I could come up with that would seem to cure everything.
I don't know. Anybody here have any suggestions or thoughts on that?
Mr. Chairman, I might ask Heather, who has to deal with zoning permits. Heather, with this language, has it been your experience that you run into difficulties approving a zoning for a subplot where the improvements aren't completed yet?
Um...
Meaning, yeah?
Normally, it doesn't come up. Usually, the developers do everything, they plat everything. But there's, I know with a project that was recently approved, it was not the case where they wanted to split out a lot first, and the road wasn't there yet, and not all the utilities were there. We did end up having to issue the permit, but then, then there was like address changes later on, gravel parking lots that were there and then removed. I don't know. So from my perspective, I, I thought it was cleaner, just, okay, build everything and then come in and get, you know, then we'll start allowing you to build homes. But it's not, I mean, I think this makes it clear of the township's position as to whether or not we would issue a permit before the construction is completed. Right now, the way it's written, I know I get a lot of those questions. And even like in a current development right now, like the Ivy Ridge development, which is a PUD of Quail Hollow, which is condominium development, and it's not platted. Okay? This is condos, all private streets, private infrastructure. They want to start their model home while in the middle of it all. I'm probably going to have to approve the permit because I don't really have anything in there that says I can't.
Okay.
Unless something like that should have come up during the township's approval process with the board, you know, which, of course, it doesn't. It's always after the fact, and the builders, hold on, I get my model home going, and that way it's done by the time development's done. So I, I think, you know, the developers want that, and the builders want that first model home done, and they'd like to maybe try to do it while the development is under construction. But, you know, I could go either way on it. I'm not, I don't know if there's a legal concern, or if, you know, it truly is. And I haven't talked to the county planning director like that detailed about his comment regarding that. But that's something we could look into a little bit more, maybe. I don't know if Mike would have thoughts on researching that a little bit more as to whether or not we would want to put that in there, or should, or could, or not.
So hold off on that one?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I'm not sure what this board feels like. So...
Okay.
I know, I, not that I'm anti-developer, but I know what you experience.
Yeah.
And, and I know the rush to get, starting up, developing a property when the, the infrastructure isn't complete. It's, it shows some disorder and things. But I understand, Keith, it conflicts with Lake County's standards, and we were more strict. It would be more stringent, if you will. I don't know if there's language, like Chairman had asked, is there a way to couch this to say, under, I, well, I don't know. Not that they have to apply for a variance to get a zoning permit. That doesn't make sense either, right?
Probably not.
So it's either, yeah.
Well, you can understand what a developer wants to do, what to get that model home built here, whereas the street three blocks, two blocks away, isn't finished yet. So, sure, go ahead. I mean, give me a zoning permit for that one, and let's move on.
And that makes sense, actually.
It does. It does. So...
Does it create any hardship on, on public safety, or any other issues that township is concerned with, when, oh, it's not occupied, obviously, they're not getting occupancy? This is just a...
If there was no good access to it, I mean, depending on, you know, the status of the, the project, if like the roads aren't paved, or, I mean, it could potentially be an issue for, if a safety service had to...
But they wouldn't open a model until it was paved because customers couldn't get to it, correct?
Well, to, well, yeah, to a certain extent. Now, if you go down to a T or a cul-de-sac or something, you're going to see orange cones. Okay, don't go beyond that. And, you know, we have parking up here for the, for the, for the model home, and you can't go any further. If you want to see what happens, come into the model home and look. We'll have the whole thing there for you. I say we leave it, you know. It can go either way. It really can't. So let's put it one way and deal with, deal with it as it goes.
If it's a problem later, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if I'm following. So what do you want to do?
Leave it the way it is.
Leave it the way we're proposing to change it, or not do the change?
The way we propose it.
The way proposed. Unless you anticipate a problem. But if, if we haven't had a problem that we are aware of, then leaving it with this language, because there is new language in here.
The new language is what we're talking about, is true. So what was there before is, the zoning permit is issued before construction is complete. We're talking about making it more stringent. And after all improvements, everything's been constructed and accepted. So it's making it contrary to Lake County's regulations.
So what you're proposing, Hiram, is strike that out?
No, I'm proposing to leave 1615 as...
As it's documented here.
As proposed.
I think that's what he meant. That's what, this, the way it is right here.
Which means it conflicts with Lake County.
County. Potentially conflicts.
But a county wants the sanitary and water lines in, prior to issuing a building permit. So this just makes it a little bit more stricter than ours.
Yes.
I don't think they're going to build a model without those, though.
[laughing]
You know?
And put some tanks, portable tanks.
Well, right. And if the building department, the building official, is really going to be looking for the yes on that sewer and water from those entities, then that does kind of cover some of the concerns regarding construction, than never being able to tie a house to proper utilities.
So public safety-wise, what they would be looking for, what the fire department would be looking for is the hydrants and service water.
Yeah.
For that fire protection, and then access to that building. Not necessarily because they'll be living in it, but there's workers at that every day, or people going to look at the model home.
Yeah.
But the model home wouldn't open without water.
Right.
And sewer, so...
I think the model home over at Villa, somehow that got approved and did not have sanitary for a while.
Really?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
But it had water, though.
Yeah, yeah.
And it was close enough, right. But it was close enough to the street or something would have happened.
Okay. So based on your experience, Heather, with changes you have in here, would that have worked well for you in the past?
Well, it would have restricted a couple homes, model homes from getting started soon.
Okay.
So we probably would have heard some negative feedback from builders. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
My look at it isn't a hardship for the developer, or a hardship for the township, if something goes in there and we don't have any control over it. It can come back to bite us in the, you know what? Yes? Yes, no?
Well, with the, I mean, as far as the utilities never being completed or something?
Right, right.
I think that's where the county would step in. If it's a subdivision, the county would step in, and they would take those funds, and they would put the improvements in. Where we might get stuck is if it's a condominium development. And, because those utilities are all private, so I don't, I don't know that they, and they don't go through the subdivision review process, they wouldn't be posting an surety to make sure all that stuff was completed.
Then how would we address that situation then, with our zoning? Good, good question, right?
Yeah, I mean, other than putting this in, being super strict, I think that's the only, you know, way you could potentially prevent that.
Has that ever been an issue before with condominiums?
Not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Chairman, I have not seen this provision in other communities to, to make it this strict, to make it, the infrastructure's got to be in before... strict, to make it, the infrastructure's gotta be in before. I haven't seen that.
So, you'd be in favor of taking this back out?
I'm, 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 I'm deferring to legal in Lake County. I think it's, I think, the question is, can we make property owner wait until the improvements are installed legally?
Yeah.
Isn't that the question?
Yeah.
Right?
Pretty much, yeah, yeah.
If we can't do that, then we shouldn't have to have this in here, especially if Lake County's already vetted that. That's in their regulations, and most communities I've never seen, they issue, they issue zoning all the time, knowing that the, the improvements are bonded. It's already accounted for.
Kind of an impasse here. Is there a downside to taking that back out, as Rich suggests?
I mean, I think it just goes back to the status quo of what we've been doing, which, yeah, which is fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's little hiccups with that stuff, but it, usually it works itself out, you know, but.
Well, maybe that's the better route to go. Take that line out of there, and go back to what we had before.
Yeah. Especially since she said it really hasn't ever become a real major issue.
So, we're talking striking out everything in red there, starting with the word "and" after, down to applicable agencies, correct?
And we're still taking out township trustees.
Yeah, and the township trustee stays out also.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that. Is anybody object? All right, let's, let's, let's do it and see if it becomes a problem down the road, but it hasn't apparently been much of a problem in the past. Okay, we'll move on to 16 dot 16, which I used to say modifications from an approved development plan. We've expanded that to say time limits, extensions, and modifications from an approved development plan. And we have a lot of new language here, and I'll read this language into the record. It's paragraph A, preliminary plan shall become null and void unless within three years, the final PUD or RCD plan for the first phase of the project has been approved by the zoning commission. The final development plan shall become null and void unless construction has commenced within one year after the approval of the final development plan. Paragraph B then says, in the event the preliminary plan becomes null and void, the PUD or RCD district will remain in place, and one of the three actions may take place. There's a colon there. The three actions that may take place are, number one, the applicant and/or property owner can resubmit a preliminary plan for review in accordance with the procedure set forth in section 16 dot 12 and 16 dot 13. Semi-colon, we go to condition number two, the applicant and/or property owner may initiate a map amendment in accordance with the procedure set forth in section eight, or, number three, the township zoning commission or township trustees may initiate a map amendment in accordance with the procedure set forth in section seven. Then we go to paragraph C, which says, an extension beyond the three years may be granted by the Board of Trustees upon a finding that the preliminary plan is consistent with the Concord Township Comprehensive Plan, and whether a reasonable effort has been made to accomplish the plan within the original time limit. Paragraph D says, an extension beyond the one year, one year may be granted by the Board of Trustees upon a finding that the final development plan is consistent with the Concord Township Comprehensive Plan, and whether a reasonable effort has been made to accomplish the plan within the original time limit. And then we go to paragraph E, which is, talks about modifications, same language as we had under this before, under the title modifications, but we added the words in here that the applicant may request from the zoning inspector minor modifications, if any approved, and then we added the words preliminary or final development plan. And then, new paragraph F, that says, if these changes are classified as minor, the zoning inspector shall review, make a decision on the proposed changes. If the modifications are classified as major, said modifications shall be subject to the newer review procedure, with an S on the end procedures, set forth in sections, plural, 16 dot 13 for a preliminary plan, or 16 dot 14 for a final development plan. Then we create a new section G here, and G goes through, major modifications shall include changes to the approved plan that involve, and it lists a number of items, and we've added under item F, a reduction of new wording required pavement width, plural, or reduction of off-street parking and/or loading spaces, plural. And then in G, in that section, we struck out a reduction in required pavement width. Then, that concludes what we have as far as modifications, but to that, we have two suggestions here from the county. One is, this section does not address if the property is sold to another developer. Does a new developer or property, property owner automatically have the ability to continue with the approved plan within the three years or after three years? That's the first question. And the other comment, the pavement width of roads, public or private, is administered by the Lake County subdivision regulations, except for condos. If this section is stating that the reduction of road width is a minor change, the township should not include it because they do not have the authority in all incidents. Moving the reduction of required pavement width to F gives the impression that this regulation has to do with parking lot, drive aisles, because it is now attached to reduction of off-parking spaces and loading spaces. If the minor change involves parking lot aisles or driveways, then it can remain. So, those are the two comments on that. There's all quite a mouthful here in this section.
Yeah, 1616 is tough.
Okay, first of all, let's talk about just what we have in here in red ink, that were the changes that we kind of worked on here over the past months, and Heather put in words. Does anybody have any issues with any of the wording that's in red ink here?
We just need to add that word development to.
Yeah, right.
In those areas.
Have to add development where appropriate, correct? But other than that, I think the wording is good.
I agree.
So, given that, then, we can address the Lake County issues about selling it off to another developer. Does a new developer, property owner automatically have the ability to continue the approved plan within three years or after three years? It makes sense that we probably ought to identify that, because if somebody were to, you know, buy a development in progress, they'd certainly want to know.
My thought, Mr. Chairman, was on C and D within this section.
Uh huh.
It doesn't indicate whether it's the present developer, or new developer, or...
Correct.
Joe Smith.
No, it doesn't.
It seems to, it's, it may be granted. Extensions may be granted. It doesn't say whether the property changed hands, or new developer, or...
Yeah.
I thought it, I thought it has the leverage, or, I should say, general language to allow the board to grant extensions.
Yeah.
Without getting into the, I think their suggestion is getting into too much detail.
Yeah, and it may be up to us to determine that at the time, or Heather.
That's how I read it.
Other thoughts?
Well, I think I agree, because we, at that point, still have the authority to say yea or nay.
Yeah, true.
We still have that authority, and that's the main thing I would always be worried about. That has to come back to us, and that's why we wanted to do stuff like we're doing today on this legislation.
It's not an event that's gonna happen on an everyday basis, for sure.
I wouldn't take...
It may never happen, but, and I think it's our discretion.
And we're, and we're covered.
Okay.
Yeah.
If we're all in agreement, then I say we, you know, kind of just go with what we have here, and it'll be our determination. Is that everyone's agreement, everyone's thought?
Yep.
Good with that?
I agree.
All right, then, let's go to the other one, where we talk about the pavement width of roads. Basically, they control that, and we don't, is what they're saying, in most cases. Do we need to have that language in there, then, on required pavement widths or reduction of off-street parking? Is there a specific reason, Heather, that we have that in there?
I don't know why it was added originally, and I, and I know we talked about moving it to F instead of being its own line of G, but I don't recall why the board wanted to do that. But I think the way it was, is written originally, it would apply to any pavement width, whether, whether it been like the roadway, or maybe just a drive aisle on a, on a plan. But he's talking, the planning commission is talking about this being a minor change, and we've actually identified this as potentially a major change. So, I don't know if you guys agree with him on that, if we couple that in with the off-street parking, does that mean that it's just drive, or like parking and drive aisle width, or, I mean, it doesn't really specify, just any pavement width?
Yeah, that's a little vague.
I mean, should we clarify that, or?
Until I read that, no, I never interpreted that as, no, it's a reduction of pavement.
Yeah.
But it's, so, the point Heather has here is, it's, it's been there.
Yeah. Except for the tweak that we put on it.
But it's in there, and we apparently don't have the authority to enforce any type of restriction, or objection to a reduction.
Well, I think we could, maybe, potentially, still, because like, I, like, you know, the condos, like he says, condos, we definitely have the authority over that, right?
Right, right.
And, you know, I, I guess his position is that the county, within their subdivision review process, dictates road width. I don't know for certain, but those boards could potentially grant variances to their own rules that we might object to. And if they have to comply with the township's approved plan, then they should have to meet whatever they, they showed us that we approved. And I know, like, I know Ron's got a lot of experience on road pavement widths in condos based on the Ohio Fire Code and things like that, so I don't know if you want to comment on that, or?
I was gonna ask you, so, you would check with other agencies, such as the fire department, before you reduce any road width, correct?
Right, yeah, I mean, if it's approved on a plan, then I would have already checked with the fire, with the fire prevention bureau, and then any, any changes on a reduction on it, I would, the first thing I would go to is, you know, the fire department, and say, does this still meet your access? So.
And we have had that in the past, where we had to actually increase the road width, because they put a cul-de-sac of that at over 500 feet, so, that, that increases that road width, and they...
And plus, they have bigger equipment now, don't you? I mean, fire department, right?
Would it make sense to leave it like we have it, and then make some reference to assuming compliance with other regulatory agencies, which could be fire department, or it could be the Lake County? Just put a little, I don't want to use the words "as applicable," because that's...
The point of this section is just to point out what are things that would be considered major. So, I don't think we need to say, like, in accordance with anybody else, like, if you're gonna do this, it's major, which would give the opportunity to be, bring the project back in front of the board, review it, and then get feedback from the applicable agencies. So, I mean, we could either not make the change, and just leave it as G, and not couple it in if it, or just go, I think, or just move forward with what we are proposing.
Or leave it like we've modified it.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have any problem with the modification, you know.
I think Heather made some good points to...
Leave it like it is.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, I agree.
Everybody agree?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, Lake County, huh?
Well, they're only the recommending board.
Exactly, the recommending board.
That's right.
Good point, Frank. Okay, going on next to section 16 dot 17, a couple minor things here in paragraph A, items one and two, paragraphs one and two, we've simply added the word, the zoning inspector shall issue orders to the developer, and the zoning inspector shall forward the information to Concord Township Board of Trustees, just identifying more specifically who does that. Pretty straightforward, I think. I don't see a problem there. Then, going on further.
We're on amendment 16, right?
Yeah, we did 16. We were on 17 there, and they don't have another recommendation to 30, and we don't have another change till 29.
29.
So, if you go to section 16 dot 29, in paragraph B.
Oh, he didn't hit 29.
All right, they're ready. In paragraph B, we've eliminated a, a paragraph within the paragraph, or at least a sentence within the paragraph, that says, final development plan approval at the township level, as set forth in section 16 dot 14, shall occur simultaneously with the approval of the final plat by the county, as required in the Lake County subdivision regulations, as amended 39, 2018. We took that, we struck that out. Any concerns? Lake County had no concerns with it. Do we have any? Okay, we're good with 1629. Then we go to 1630, where we do have a Lake County recommendation, and this 1630 is, the title is zoning permit, and we've added some new wording to this. The old wording said, upon approval of the final development plan by the township, and then we've added the new words, and after all of the proposed improvements have been constructed and accepted by the applicable agencies, comma, and we go back to the old wording, and the final plat by Lake County Planning Commission, new words, has been recorded, those three new words, comma, the zoning inspector shall issue zoning permits that comply with the approved final development plan in accordance with the procedure set forth in section 11 zoning permits, and amended, as amended 39, 2018. And then, okay, so that's 1630, and the comment from Lake County then is, Lake County subdivision regulations allow for a construction surety to be posted in lieu of improvements being installed as a condition of the plat being recorded. This allows for the plat to be recorded, lots to be created, and property be transferred prior to the improvements being installed. This contradicts the subdivision regulations. So.
We've already, Mr. Chairman, we've already determined in 1615.
Similar situation.
Yeah, same situation.
Okay, so we just ignore that one, and go with what we have?
No.
No.
It's not accept the changes.
Right, their changes, or our changes.
Not accept our changes.
Okay. So, we want to take those out of there?
Yes.
Okay. So, we would remove everything in red?
In red.
Okay. We good with that? Remove red. So, that goes back to the original 1630 as it was written before?
Yes.
Okay, remove the changes.
Can you remind me why we did that in the first place?
Don't know.
Don't know, okay.
Okay, then, paragraph 1631, we did change that. It was previously titled modifications, and we renamed it time limits, comma, extensions, and modifications. And we've added the words time limits, extensions, and, and then it goes back to the original wording, modification to an approved development shall be in accordance with section 1616, amended 39, 2018. No problem there. And then, 1632, no changes. So, any further discussion of this as part of the public hearing?
None here, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any reason to keep the public hearing open?
I had, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Heather had, I did not have all my notes from last month. I only remembered one of the comments. Heather has a notation.
Yeah, there were a few comments that Rich had emailed to me, and I think we actually covered a few of them already. Yes, the, the minor typo in proposes versus proposed, we covered. The labeling of 1614, A, B, and C, we've got that, we're gonna correct that. The only one that I see here that we didn't really... The only one that I see here that we didn't really talk about was under sixteen sixteen, C and D. This says to do with who's going to grant the proposed extension, extensions to plans.
Sixteen what?
Fifteen?
Sixteen sixteen.
Oh, sixteen.
C and D. You can explain it, do you remember?
I think I remember.
Well, like, right now, under C, we have that after three years, the board of trustees would grant the extension on the preliminary development plan. And then, if the final development plan's going to expire, it would be up to the board of trustees to grant that approval as well. So Rich was asking whether or not that should be the zoning commission.
I was asking, I was commenting that is the board of trustees in a position to grant an extension on a preliminary development plan that we're, we're the body that's been reviewing and approving it?
Okay.
And that was the intent, to make these changes, so everything, no matter what, we come back to the board?
Well, that's, yeah, well, especially on granting an extension on something that the board of trustees hasn't been actively participating in. And it's, so anyway, that's.
Well, and can I? I don't, I mean, that's what you were saying, yes. But just to be clear, the, the application to rezone and the approval of the preliminary plan is the, is the decision of the board of trustees?
Yes.
Always. You guys are the recommending body on whether or not you want to approve the district change and the approval of the preliminary plan. It is always the trustees are going to make that final call, just like they would with any zoning amendment. The major change that, you know, if this gets approved moving forward, would be that once the preliminary plan has been approved by the township trustees, the final plan, based on what you guys are recommending to change, would come back to this board instead of going to the trustees. And that's not what was said right here, yeah. I just wanted to make sure you understood that because you still are the recommending body on the preliminary plan and the district change.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I think an extension for the preliminary plan really probably should still be the trustees.
Still be the trustees.
The way I look at it, but, but then, maybe then, once the final plan's been approved by the zoning commission, an extension on that approval probably should come back to this board? I don't know. I think that's up for discussion. But then, that kind of goes with your comment, Rich, about like, they've not seen the final plan.
They haven't seen.
So it probably should come back to you guys.
To the zoning commission. So that would only impact D as opposed to C.
Right.
If necessary.
If it ever came up, yeah.
Well, I don't see any problem if they're only looking for an extension. I always saw a problem in the past is them making okay for making changes that divert away from why we gave them.
Yeah, this is only addressing extensions.
That's right. Me personally, I don't have any issue with that.
So maybe it's okay, just leave it.
The, the original approval, any changes to the, any document that I've been associated with, it's got to go back to the original body, if you want to say. Whenever we did drawings, a change to the drawing has to be made and approved by the same level of people that did the original one.
But we are, as she pointed out, a recommending body here.
Well, but it's got to be brought back to the same recommending body that did the recommending in the first place.
For simply a time extension? We're not talking a change here, we're talking a time extension.
This covers, I think, your concern about changes.
We're talking about, yeah.
I agree with you, you know, you're talking about making alterations for this particular item that we're talking about now. All it has to do is just extending the time.
To do what we'd already approved that they could do.
To do what we already did.
In other words, we've told them what they could do, or we've agreed with them. All they're just asking for is additional time.
Time to do it.
So there's no change to anything?
There is, there's a change to the time.
What is the downside of that?
What happens if you change the time and I don't agree with it? I mean, why not go back to the same body that approved it in the first place?
In other words, whether it's kind of going from like eight months to do it to twelve months, what would be the difference?
Yeah, why would you object?
Why would you object? I just, what are you doing, just giving them a little?
Because my plans have you completing the project, or whatever it may be, at eight months. And you're affecting my activity that follows that.
But how does that affect zoning? You know?
I'm just bringing up the point.
I understand what you're saying. And some projects in a different environment, that would be valid, but I don't, I fail to see how that would affect anything that has to do with the zoning of a project. It's simply a time extension.
They still have to build the same.
Who approved it in the beginning? We're talking about D? And who did it begin with? Who granted?
Well, all projects are going to go through us for recommendation of approval. And that's all the detail, what it consists of, all the detail of the project. And granted, it says it'll be completed in this given timeframe. But for some reason, circumstances, maybe that they can't avoid, causes them to need an additional six months or something.
Hiram, if I may, look at sixteen fourteen. And to your, what you're concerned with, we have addressed. It's in sixteen fourteen. The board of trustees is crossed out.
Yes, we took them out of there.
So what are we doing in D?
The paragraph A, sixteen fourteen, that's the, the plan itself is approved by us, not the trustees.
Okay. What occurred before is the trustees approved, and that changes, and we never saw it.
Yeah.
It never came back to us.
So what?
It's just time extension.
Because many times now, in this day and age, I have clients, for example, that they have a schedule to keep, and all of a sudden, the parts haven't come from California.
There are shortages and things like that.
There are shortages, big time nowadays. So, you know, they ask for an extension to keep so they can continue on when the parts come in.
Does it change the scope of the project?
It doesn't change the scope of the project.
Or the detail of the project. Good time. Do we agree?
Okay.
Okay. Everyone agree?
Yeah, well, oh, wait, no. No, that's the same. Oh, originally, you were suggesting, Mr. Ivalis, that it would be up to the zoning inspector to make that determination for the board of trustees or the zoning commission on whether or not a reasonable effort has been made. But I think we've talked about that. That should be up to whatever the board. That was it. Yep, the other ones, we already incorporated, yes.
Those are all your concerns, Rich?
Yeah, that was it, thank you. Thanks, Heather.
All right, I'll re-ask, is there any reason to extend the hearing? Or can we close the hearing?
Unless Heather has some things she still wants clarification from legal counsel.
Or does it, does it need to stay open until you make the, all the corrective changes?
Do you, yeah, do you want to see a copy with everything in here? Like, with all the changes we've talked about?
That's why I say we should recess until the changes.
Yeah, because I can, we can recess till the next month, and then I can bring back all the modifications that we talked about this evening and make sure.
And still leave it in the hearing, or do that as part of what we're going to do later?
Well, when we reopen, after we recess, we would just bring up the things why we recessed for and get clarified that we agree with everything. Because the public would say, oh, they don't like it, well, we just decided to change, possibly, if we had people.
Because, well, once we close the public hearing.
We would not close the public hearing tonight, we would recess.
Right.
Recess the public hearing.
Therefore, we would delay the vote.
And we're good as far as time?
Right, because time-wise, you can continue the hearing. You can recess as many meetings as you need to.
Then we don't vote under new business tonight?
Correct.
Okay. All right, if, is that the recommendation here? Could I have a motion to, or do I need a motion to keep the hearing open and recess it?
I think the chair can keep it open, but legal?
Do we need a motion to do it?
It never hurts to do a motion, just in case.
Back in matter of record. Mr. Chairman, I still move that we recess this hearing until next month to make the final decision.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
You have a second.
Okay, Ron, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing then remains open and in recession until the January meeting. So, moving on to our agenda then. Gentlemen, you have in front of you the minutes from the November meeting. I was not here, so I'll abstain on the vote. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as written for the.
November seventh.
November seventh.
For the November seventh meeting.
Thank you, Hiram, do I have a second on that?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Rich. All in favor of accepting the minutes, approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, no, I abstain. Okay, correspondence, I'll start on my left with Frank, any correspondence?
Aye, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Hiram.
None, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I had none, Ron?
None.
Rich?
Nothing.
Okay, no correspondence this morning. Public participation, it seems we have no public, so no participation. The next item would be new business to vote, and that'll remain open for the January meeting. And we have no old business. So, our next meeting, believe it or not, is in 2024, January second. So this is our last meeting for 2023. So, January second, 2024, next meeting. Anything else before we adjourn? Okay, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.